Tom Campiello, Tim Timkey, Sean Tenny, please.
Tim Timkey was a dear friend. All right.
Thank you.
I had no intention of this meeting turning into a meeting. We agreed on it being the first I've had today, thinking that we just hired a police officer. So I agreed to make a meeting today. I'm having summer camp volunteering helping them down there. And if I knew this was gonna go long, but when we come to full-fledged meeting, I would pick another time. But here we are, so it's gonna be a regular meeting. We'll start off, we have a new police officer. His name is Joseph Broberg. I interviewed him on the phone. And Deputy Mayor Johnny DeGolis, who's the liaison down there, she interviewed him too. The police chief is recommending Joe, you want to talk about him?
Yep, sure. So Joe Broberg, he was actually my sergeant over in Chester for most of my career. He's retired as of three years, eleven months, and a couple days ago. He'd be an incredible asset to this department. He did a lot of administrative work with the, a lot of, he does some, you know, systems that a lot of young officers aren't necessarily used to. And, I mean, he's just, you know, he's looking for part-time work right now. And really, he's not someone who's gonna cause problems. He knows that what this place is, in that small village, that's very community-oriented. And he's very good doing that. My entire time with him, never seen him be over strong-handed or, I don't know, under any of the weight. So, he can afford to be here today, he's on vacation. The reason why we had to call this meeting is because he did retire almost four years ago. On the third, in the four years. So if we do not pass that point, he does have to redo a pressure course for that person. But that's why they asked you guys to come in for a discussion.
Yeah, and, you know, from having been hired as an official in the police department, when you have a full-time police officer, you have to take the top three. You hope that you're getting the best. You hope you get the transfer from somewhere, what comes comes. And they gotta go to an academy. Here, we're hiring somebody that our police chief is aware of. I mean, you hire part-time police officers, you can pick which ones you want. And your qualifications, and that's a benefit of having a part-time police officer that you're getting hired. So that is a good thing. All they can ask is to hire Joseph Broberg for police officer in the village of Montgomery. Part-time status.
One second.
All in favor? Oppose? Carry. Another thing we have is authorized surplus vehicles. The police chief's vehicle, or the police chief and the deputy superintendent. What they do is they sell them when we make some money. So there's a list provided of what vehicles were to be sold. And I said, I think we've all seen the list, they're all...
There's stuff I want to...
Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Jake said he would not be here.
The only thing I would ask that board, I requested the board that any money that we make off of those vehicles, for the PD, it is, for those two PD vehicles, be put towards the Bowler's, for the station.
In front?
Right in front, yeah. We would need fourteen of them. It's not an incredible price, but it's, you know, if we can get the money to cover with this, then I think that'd be a better idea. But the main concern is, you know, someone driving through the front of the station by accident on purpose. Right now, all we have is just plywood and drywall sitting between us and the car. You know, it's almost happened a couple times, and we've been lucky so far. So hopefully, it doesn't happen, but I would say, if we could, we'd have more than Bowler's. The Bowler's, I like, doesn't have any, which is really fun.
We don't have a term here today, so do I make a motion to, I guess I make a motion to do that?
Do you have an estimate on what they are worth? I'm not here to sound sorry.
No, no, so the last estimate I got, I don't have an official estimate. The last estimate I got, I think it's about two hundred Bowler. And we need fourteen of them, so twenty-eight hundred or so.
Okay.
So probably about three thousand.
So you make a motion if the way you clear from the attorney that the monies from the sale of police vehicles could go towards that, towards that one purchase.
Yeah, I just don't know how you guys could have to...
Well, how about we just make a police chief, as we say, make a motion, make a motion to put that to the police department? Put batteries to protect the police department, make a motion to do that? All in favor?
I don't understand the motion. I don't know, I'm not comfortable making a motion just because I don't know exactly how, what line it goes, yeah, what would the intent?
No, we're wasting energy, it doesn't gonna do half something.
It's more a request than a...
Yeah, I think, yeah. Let's put it on the next agenda, just so we make sure we allocate the funds in the proper budget lines and all that.
All right, move on to the fire hydrants. A couple of days ago, I was advised both by a phone call and a written letter directed to Mayor Henry, to the Montgomery Fire Chief Robert Reynolds Jr., that there were several non-operating fire hydrants in this village. Bob told me that he knows I was not aware of this issue, and it's been going on for a long time. And the monies to repair these were used for other things. I was aware that one hydrant was not working in the corner of Railroad and Clinton. But I was assured that there was enough hydrants to make that one not working recover for. Like I've said many times before, safety is my number-one issue in this village. That doesn't only include crime, it includes fire safety. Half of my family are firefighters. Bottom line is, I was served with the notice that the hydrants are not working in this village. I immediately instructed Jake Henry, our Department of Public Works Superintendent, to look into this and to fix what he could. He repaired a hydrant on Jefferson. Jake advised me that the other ones are beyond repair. I want these fixed yesterday. We have an obligation to our residents, our firefighters, and we have to answer to the insurance companies who give discounts to folks who live near a fire hydrant to get a discount on their homeowners insurance. This is a dangerous situation, and cannot wait for possible grants or money from the state. It needs action now. My proposal is to go into our fund balance, emergency fund, which has been raised from three-hundred thousand to about nine-hundred and fifty thousand this year, and take out roughly two-hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to start repairing these hydrants immediately. Jake told us it's gonna run fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars a hydrant. This is emergency funding. Tell me what more emergency there is than fire hydrants that do not work. I make a motion right now to do this. One hydrant is not working, is too many. I make a motion to take the money out of our fund balance, emergency funding, and start repairing the fire hydrants immediately. Make a motion?
Second with discussion?
Go ahead.
So what do you think, those are more, um, do we have the, is there no other set aside fund that is directly? I don't know budgetarily, but which fund it comes out of, that's what I'm asking.
Comes out, yeah, well, it comes out of, this is emergency funding.
Okay, so it's not covered under anything else?
Not president, under anything else, and I don't, excuse me, I don't wanna wait. I don't wanna wait one more day. I agree with this when I first took off.
I agree, I agree. I just didn't know we'd be taking that away from...
When did we get the letter, I'm sorry, from the fire department?
Couple of days ago.
And to continue this discussion, this is, this is from months I've had discussions with the DPW and Deputy Mayor about non-working fire hydrants. So I apologize if the information did not get to you directly, but I did speak with the Deputy Mayor about it. And DPW.
There's no excuse for not having this done.
I agree, and I thank you for getting her...
I don't care who else we spoke to, I don't care. The bottom line is, I'm aware of it. The letter was addressed to me, and I'm not getting personal on this. I need this done yesterday. So I make a motion to take...
No, I'm discussing, I have more questions first of all. And once disagreeing with you, I just wanna know, if you have the information, why didn't you go over it or have access to it right away? What, how many fire hydrants?
Did I have the information? I know what you're saying.
Like, maybe you could have forwarded that, so that we could have read it right away.
She said we didn't have it.
No, I didn't get this email. She's asking you why you didn't send that email to us. With the, or before the meeting.
Bobby, how many places did you send this to? This went to the firehacks, right?
The email was always sent to you, the mayor, the DPW supervisor, and the village clerk.
I heard a lot of people, regardless of where it went, we haven't put a timeline on this. I wanted to discuss the details.
Can you clarify how many fire hydrants are offline or just...
Fourteen fire hydrants, I know.
Thank you.
Fourteen fire hydrants.
And how many do we have totals?
I don't know how many we have in total.
It's roughly about ten percent of what we have.
Ten percent total?
Approximately about, I wanna say a hundred and fifty-five hydrants in the village.
Could be there a work...
You know, if we, if we learn by, by other municipalities' mistakes, let's look back from Los Angeles Fire Department. They just got over massive fires out there, and the hydrants weren't working, they used the money for something else. I don't think this needs to be discussed much more than, Jake, go to work.
It does, because speaking with Jake yesterday in reference to today's agenda, they have to hire an outside company to do this. Isn't that something that the DPW has to do?
So what some of the things they can do, because they fixed the one on Jefferson. Whatever they have to do, start now. That's it, that's it. Whatever they have to do, they have to hire independent people to do it. That's okay. Just do it. The letter was addressed to me, and I take this responsibility seriously.
Do we have, um, do we have to go out and bid for that?
That's a good question.
In an emergency, no. No, in an emergency, we can't wait three or four, well, we got three or four bids. Whoever Jake uses or whatever the fire department recommends, that's it. Because if we go out for bid, it takes two or three months. That's it.
I think she's asking, are we required to offer it legally? And are...
But we don't have an attorney right here, right now. I asked him to be here, he's not here. So the responsibility always falls with me. And again, I'll say, Jake, start doing it right now. And I'll beg forgiveness if I did the wrong thing. As a matter of fact, I don't have to beg for forgiveness. This is the right thing. Can you put fire hydrants, start doing it?
I have a question, and if you don't want to answer, I'm not, I don't intend to put you on the spot. But just for future planning purposes, how, how long has this been a growing situation? Like, did we, did no...
It's funny, I had a conversation with Rick Mallory last night after the funeral. And he said back when he was captain, there was probably five or six hydrants out of service. So this has been a problem for probably about the last twenty-five, thirty years.
Okay, and because I don't know a lot about your job as a firefighter, how, what's the typical lifetime, lifespan of a fire hydrant? And we're servicing them and checking them every six months, or once a year?
Twice a year.
Twice a year, every year?
That I wouldn't have the answer for, the life expectancy of it. Obviously, it's the water lines that are below it, including the fire hydrant too. Anything in the ground that could possibly shift, you know, getting hit, weather, you know, snowplows going by, a lot of snow dumped down, and possibly with weight. However, it's my understanding for the NFPA, that the hydrants are supposed to be tested in the municipality every year. They're supposed to be flow-tested, not flushed, flow-tested. And once all the caps come off, they get flow-tested through all the connections. And if it's private property, such as Spring Meadows, which is put by HLA, that does have municipal water, however, they have private hydrants, they need to be tested. I may have misspoke, municipalities every five years, private hydrants a year.
Okay, but please you require...
There should be a flow rating on each one. According to the NFPA, fire hydrants should be painted as per what their flow are. I know red looks very pretty in a beautiful historic village like this. However, coming up to it, if firefighters have the knowledge of how much water is coming from that hydrant, or how big the main may be, it could let us know if it's adequate to use in case it involves you.
What, you mean, put a tag on it?
The color of the fire hydrant should indicate what the flow rating is from the hydrant.
You crystal, you know, stuff, I don't know. But one thing I don't want is a tag on it that says, "We're not working." This isn't vending machine, you know, go to the next vending machine.
The tag has to be on it, though.
The tags are on right now, Jake.
Yeah, well, I want them off. Once they fix, I want them off. And I never wanna see another fire hydrant not working in this village again.
Are you ready?
So there should be something that going forward, we're adding a line item to the budget for...
I don't know what you're, I just wanted to...
And you've gone, Heather's gone here, so, which, there's a fire hydrant, Heather's, it does not, separate from our... We have a very, we're fixing ours, okay. Should they fix theirs too?
Is there a problem?
Oh, can we have a conversation?
Yes.
I just wanted, I just wanna move.
Sorry, I'm sure, so the question is, he's, I'm sorry. Oh, he can't see behind you. He's not, please turn.
Yes, sir.
Do these come out of the main water line? That was why I was asking the budgetary question. Does it affect the main line when we do repairs on these, does it have to shut off the main line?
The hydrant should just be hydro lines.
So we can prove this completely separate, and it will not affect any drinking water either?
This is what Jake told me. Says some of them, the older ones, the valves, when they break down, they could shoot up in the air like a cartoon. So that's where he wants these, the new ones will be two-twenty-five, no, two-thousand twenty-five.
Can we call for a vote?
That's what I am calling for.
No, you checked it, but we had a discussion, now I'm asking you to call it.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion to take money from the fund balance emergency fund, and start repairing these fire hydrants immediately.
I just have one question on, with the repairs being conducted, the village was also sent a letter approximately ten years ago that any fire hydrants that get replaced or repaired in the village have specified connections to them for us to make it easier for firefighting. If you look at some fire hydrants in this village, some of them are only about six to eight inches off the ground. They're buried in the village. One for instance is at the corner of Autumn Leaf and Goodwill. Tell you that there's another one on River Street, and they only have what's called two, two-and-a-half inch connections.
Bobby, you're an intelligent guy. You're a fire chief and a police officer. Jake's an intelligent guy. I'm not well-versed on this. You call the shots, and Jake call the shots.
Okay.
That's why we have managers, not politicians, not...
I think what he's asking is, can we word the, the motion that it says, replacement and repairs of all necessary?
Yeah, replacement and repair according to what the fire department wishes for.
Can you resend that, to everyone, everybody? Can you resend that letter, that request? Not that we don't have it, but so everyone has it.
The information is in the last email that I provided you. You should have that.
I would just ask that you amend the motion to discuss it with our attorney, if it has to go out to bid and follow all of the right procedure. I will agree if it's today.
I want it today.
As long as he can get, please have him involved in the meeting today.
Our attorney was asking if, our attorney was asking to be here today for whatever reason, he's not gonna be here today. I am not gonna delay a safety issue, people's lives, my...
We're not delaying, he's saying he's...
Let me finish, please. I am not gonna delay a safety issue because our attorney wasn't here. This letter was addressed to me, and I will take, I will take...
So are you declaring a state of emergency?
I think it is.
Just think, we can do it immediately, because it's very important. And we can call the attorney before end of business today to make sure that we follow the right protocol to do it, is all I'm asking.
Now what I can have?
We should need a vote.
Yes, fine.
If you would like, I'll read the email since it came from me, and everybody can hear it.
Thank you.
All right.
So the subject for the email was out of service fire hydrants and requests for immediate action, newer replaced hydrants. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this to bring to your attention a serious public safety concern regarding fire hydrants within the village of Montgomery that are currently out of service and not properly marked or identified as such. The value to clearly marked out-of-service fire hydrants poses a significant risk to the safety of residents and first responders, particularly in the event of a fire where we such encounters. Properly functioning and clearly marked fire hydrants are critical to ensuring that the fire suppression efforts are not delayed or compromised. I respectfully request the village taking immediate action to inspect all fire hydrants within the village to determine their operational status, ensure that any out-of-service hydrants are clearly marked with visible covers, tags, or signage indicating that they are not functional, provide updates to the local fire department and public regarding the status of these fire hydrants, and any plans for repair or replacement, provide a flow rating for all fire hydrants within the village of Montgomery. As was requested in 2010, any newer replaced fire hydrant within the village of Montgomery have a storage connection in addition to two, two-and-a-half inch connections, and hydrants be color-coded showing the flow rates as per NFPA guidelines. This is a matter of urgent importance for the safety and well-being of our community. Please confirm, receive this letter, provide a timeline for corrective action. Thank you for your prompt attention to this critical issue, respectfully, Robert Reynolds, Chief of Montgomery Fire Chief.
Thanks, Bobby. Now we have a fire chief who requests immediate action. That's not, wait, let's see if we can get a bid. Let's not wait, let's call the attorney later. That's now. So my motion is, I make a motion to take a roughing two-hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of our fund balance, emergency funding, and start repairing these hydrants immediately. And never let another one go. Make a motion?
We've already had the motion and a second, oh, it's...
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Carry. Okay, Debbie, can you put that down? Bobby, thank you very much for bringing that my attention, if I was aware of that.
Appreciate it.
No, thank you. Thank you, thank all you guys for all the work you do, you volunteer. You get a little bit of a current tax, which you can buy coffee and sandwiches with, please. All right, move on to discuss the void street sidewalks. I walk those two and three times a day. It's, it's embarrassing. People are always asking, "What's going on here? What are you doing? We gotta do something." That's the second important thing. You walk down, you know, it was funny, they're calling it Hembury Highway, because I fought like crazy to get from where it is to where it is now. But then the funding stopped there. Well, now, you have, you get to the left side, then you run across the street, well, you run for your life, then you run across the street, you cover the footstool, because then you go back by the old backpack and go there. The other side, the sidewalks they refer to as Hembury Highway, cost a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to put in. DPW did it for thirty-four thousand. So we can find some money somewhere to continue that, because there's an awful lot of young families, kids, that now use that area. The area has grown up there. So I would suggest somewhere around thirty-five to forty thousand, depending on what Jake says, to that coming on the emergency fund balance. It's still, it was thirty, three-hundred thousand when we did the budget. We got it up to a rough of nine-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These are two emergencies. Now, this is nowhere near an emergency as the fire hydrants. This I would wanna consider, the fire hydrant, that's a whole different story.
We put five thousand dollars in the budget for sidewalks this year, Paul Nick?
I'm not sure, I mean...
Yeah, I believe we did. And didn't we apply for, wasn't that part of what we applied for, for the community development block grant with those sidewalks also?
I'm not sure. Do you know?
It was switched to the HI for the Zee Center for the differential, or whatever, so we could do that one. Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So, I know millings are substantially cheaper, and they're not a base for a future sidewalk. Is there a way to prepare the site, which he did very quickly down at the ballpark for parking, to just prepare the site and create a milling walkway that connects the two sidewalks? It's still gonna increase the safety? It will be flattened, and the millings are substantially cheaper?
Is the ADA compliant?
Should be, I'm just playing it out.
I don't think so.
Well, they do walkways through the parks, really. Oh, I'm sorry, let's add, yes, right?
So I have an agreement for millings and quarry process, and you tackle with bluestone dust. The bluestone dust makes the ADA compliant. So I have that, if you hook up with the highway superintendent on the town side, you probably...
Will you go and have Jake discuss this, and see if that's a cheaper alternative?
No, I would be willing to do it. These are experts. I'm just a politician here, this is what I want.
Can I make a motion that we, well, we don't even have to. Can we just give Jake a call and say, "I'm gonna have him touch base with..."
Have him get touch base with Sean Mears.
Sean Mears, perfect.
I spoke with Sean Mears on this, though.
I just think it's a, it's a substantially cheaper and faster alternative. All you do is run it over with a bobcat, flatten it out, put the millings down, and you're done.
Steve, I do agree with you on that. However, we are a unique village, or a beautiful little village, and we want to keep it that way. So I really don't want, I don't want a sloppy mess. I want it to look good.
This would be the same thing, use the base coat for the sidewalk anyway.
All right, well, let's see what Jake says. We'll see what he says on that.
So we'll continue this discussion at the next meeting?
Yes, yes, we can do that, we can do that. All right, next up, authorized nighttime training and lodging expenses, just under three thousand, trustee Pecoraro, trustee Embarani. Open discussion, you know? Okay, my point, if we all went, this would run roughly ten, eleven thousand dollars. We really had a tough budget this year. Really tough budget. We were counting pencils, that's how bad it was. I am not going to be, the monthly dinners for trustees, for politicians, because I'm trying to save money here. I'm not going to this because I think we need money. As a matter of fact, we're all, I think, allowed two thousand dollars a year for training. I wanna take my two thousand dollars, and you're gonna go to the fire department for their hydrants. I can do most of this online, and I don't need to go to Lake Placid in the fall to get that kind of training. We have professionals here, we have a fire chief, we have a police chief, we have an attorney, we have an engineer. They're not gonna teach me anything that these guys can't answer. So I'm, that's my, my opinion on that. You have my share of this to the hydrants.
I have a motion that we approve the training for trustee Pecoraro and Embarani based on the budgeted amount allowed for training their trustees.
I'm still open to discussion. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, you just, you have anything to say, honest? Any discussion? Any ready discussion? All right, I make the motion to, I make the motion for trustee Pecoraro and trustee Embarani to attend Lake Placid in the fall training, at a cost of just under three thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me. Adopt a, adopt a...
I'm sorry, I just supplied five, Mike opposes. I need a second. Cynthia made it, I made it.
Adopt a resolution to support Brian Moore prioritizing the DOT, the paving of two-eleven from Dunn Road to Wood Street. I've been on the phone with Rob Rolson six months ago on this. As a matter of fact, we're all going out in the car next week to study the area. Brian Moore, I spoke with him recently, I have an Eagle Scout presentation here. I'm definitely in favor of a resolution. I noticed though that it has been changed to have a root resolution with the town together. No, I don't wanna do that. This is the village of Montgomery. I wanna just stay with the village of Montgomery. I don't want to do joint studies. The village of Montgomery is unique. Nobody else is doing it with the town, the village of Montgomery. It's two-eleven, it's Dunn Road, Wood Street, I wanna do it with us, so, but I think it's great. Brian came over, we sat for a while and talked about it. Rob called me the other day, and we talked about all times in this. So we are going out, we're all going out in the car, because I forgot the date for the meeting, and we're riding around the area. And hopefully, we can get this done. So I make a motion to do this.
I'll second it for discussion. The suggestion was made at some point in the email correspondence from the attorney, Will Frank, that the town was also about choosing to adopt one which would support this, and that it may look stronger, or it would be easier to address, this is guidance, that we also adopt the same statement in tandem with them. I just also, I see that he just sent, that Assemblyman Moore's assistant just sent over correspondence recently, but that there was a letter sent to the entire board dated June twenty-fifth. Did we receive that, because it wasn't a stamp of receipt?
I did not receive that.
I, I sent you the same thing, because this letter dated, and I'm twenty-fifth, and everything's not yet. Yeah, definitely went to the wrong email, so at least we have it now.
Also, I don't leave it to me, this will be...
But we did go to the wrong email, because Brian called me up and asked me what's the wrong email. Let me pause it. Hey, we got guys helping us, so...
And I spoke, I spoke to Supervisor Prusha, and he said it's fine if we adopt this today, because they're gonna adopt theirs, and two is still better than one, so it's perfectly fine for us to... You read it and...
Well, I think we're all in agreement to accept that. This is the village of Montgomery. I spoke with Will Frank earlier today, and he should not, in my opinion, join us with the town of Montgomery without checking this. Again, we are the village of Montgomery. We would have done it with anybody else, we seem to somehow trying to get close. No, we are the village of Montgomery. The only thing we share is the name Montgomery, other than we are completely separate from the town, except we share an accessory. And I wanna keep that uniqueness here. That's that. So...
Pay taxes, get that.
My only...
My only concern. I intended to give support for this, obviously, it's something that we've been working on for a long time. But I did speak with Ryan, Assemblyman Moore, about making sure that he circled back with Senator Rawlson about that, because we are, we are working with Senator Rawlson, and he seems to be trying to make sure that he furthers all of the actions implemented with the DOT for ongoing repairs and simplified permits, so I just am concerned that they are on the same page. I did forward it, some of the correspondence to Senator Rawlson, I have not received a response yet, but it's coming next week, so I just, I hope that they're consulting with each other on that, so that it's united and more, more the mayor here in that fight.
I'm okay with that, I just don't wanna do anything. I wanna always be the village of Montgomery. Keep the village in Montgomery. Alright, so what we supposed to do? Adopt a resolution to support Brian Moore prioritizing the DOT, the paving of 211 from Dunn Road to Wood Street. And the mayor votes it. Alright, make a motion?
You just got a poll for vote, person who seconds right after that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Can we also do the other resolution while we're here?
This resolution just got sent to me an hour ago. We have, we have. Well, I didn't have that. We have, we have a thing here, we passed rules that we will not put anything on the agenda unless we all voted for it.
I'm sorry, what?
That's not all.
Yes, it was to put anything on the agenda, well, anything on the agenda last minute.
It is within my right to add something to the agenda that we've been talking about for months.
We have rules that we all adopted, that said anything that was added for the last minute agenda at the meeting would have to be agreed upon by everyone. That was in there, we all agreed on that.
Respectfully on the record, I don't think that that was any of our recovery.
Yes, it was, yes, it was.
Where do you see that?
Yeah, we could take a break.
Well, we don't have our attorney here. So, but what I see here, what I see here is, I think it should be put up at the 19th.
Absolutely not.
Because the deputy mayor is not here.
So, we spoke with the deputy mayor about this yesterday, and that's what brought this resolution.
I know, I told him what to tell you. So.
So, we would like to move over with this mic.
Yeah, I know they'd like to.
This is a clarifying, just to be clear, can we read the resolution to the audience so they know what we're discussing?
It's just clarification.
This is a resolution from the village board, where, and let me, let me tell you about this also before it starts, I'm not aware of this. This comes from the town to do a study with the village on the sewer plant. This has all been done without my knowledge. Two trustees, two future trustees, and a present trustee were brought out to the town of Montgomery, and they discussed this with them before I even knew about this. So, now we even know. Alright, here it goes. Whereas on about April 8th, 2025, the village of Montgomery received a letter from the town of Montgomery proposing to perform a joint town-village study. The village waste water system and treatment plant cost $15,000 to be shared equally with the town and the village. Whereas in addition, the letter proposal, the village of Montgomery, was provided with a direct professional services agreement from Delaware Engineering, in which Delaware needs to have the services to be performed in connection with the feasibility study. Whereas on April 22nd, 25, the village board adopted a motion to approve the feasibility study that be conducted by Delaware Engineering. Whereas on June 7th, 25, the town of Montgomery supervisor executed in the many agreements between the town and Delaware Engineering, and, nowhere in here says the village. Whereas special counsel for the village of Montgomery requested that Delaware Engineering name the village as an additional insured with respect to project and require an addendum to the agreement. And whereas special counsel for the village prepared an addendum to agreement that was executed by the town of Montgomery and Delaware Engineering on about July 30th, 25, a couple days ago. Making the village of Montgomery a third party beneficiary to the agreement and ensuring identifying voting the village harmless with respective services to be performed. Whereas, we are necessary to clarify the village board's action respected the joint town-village feasibility study. The village board hereby approved the professional services agreement and addendum executed in connection with the joint sewer feasibility study. The village board hereby agrees to approve the proposal of the town of Montgomery that the cost of the sewer feasibility study shall be shared equally with the town and the village, at a cost of $7,500 each. The payment for the services to be performed by Delaware Engineering shall be village expense to be paid from the village funds. The village treasurer is authorized and directed to pay $7,500 fee to Delaware Engineering for the service to be performed. The village employees and consultants are authorized and directed to provide necessary information and assistance to Delaware Engineering as required to provide Delaware Engineering full access to the village facilities as may be necessary in feasibility study. Now, with discussion.
Well, I mean, first we have to make a motion, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution as right, I'll second it for discussion.
So you discuss, go ahead.
So all of this came about because you instructed the DPW supervisor to not let Delaware Engineering go in to do, start the feasibility study. It was first told that there was no agreement. I supplied the village clerk with the agreement that came from the town. Then it was insurance, we needed them to be insured, so Joe McKay, the attorney in this matter, then put everything together for that. And then when I came down to the village yesterday, called and asked Arlene saying, we've got everything that we need, and we're forward now. And the DPW supervisor was here. She stated that there was no contract between us and the town, and the mayor will not sign any contract.
The mayor's not aware of anything, was, was all done without the mayor knowing any of this. Now I don't want to sign a contract, because it was set a week, an hour ago.
So.
The deputy mayor's not here.
And you had, did you or did you not have a long conversation with Joe McKay yesterday about this?
I had Joe, long conversation with Joe McKay an hour ago.
And you yesterday, did you yesterday?
I'm not here to be questioned. Deputy mayor's not here, and the superintendent is in front of the clock, so.
So then I asked the attorney to create this, so they moved forward.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a roll call vote.
No, no, I won't vote. This is something I had no knowledge about, or had spoken to directly on this. No question, no presentation was done in front of the public explaining the process. At the time, one board member and two future board members met with the town supervisor without my knowledge and came up with this idea. This study proposal, which will lead to bigger things, no doubt, is too big of an issue to be decided by a village board. The public must be aware of this. And as all information is put out, then they decide, not the village board. This is why the public does not trust its government. Things happen overnight, and people say, how did that get passed? I will not have that here. An example is the housing up by Shopway. How many times it's changed direction, and several things happening there without the public knowing it. There is no way that I'm going to permit an outside municipality to come to our municipality and study our perfectly working sewer plant. We just got a study back two weeks ago, that the sewer plant is functioning just right. I will not be bullied here. By taking over our village parklands and tripling the size of our present sewer plant will only lower property values in this village, while raising property values on the 17K corridor in the town due to those businesses and developments advertising they have access to sewers. The smell from this proposal will travel all over this village, concentrating on the inner village itself, as Elizabeth Street, Taff Avenue, as well as properties to the west, up to River Street, Pleasant Avenue, Weaver Street, and further, traveling across the Walker River to the houses on 17K, Oldbury Post Road, Hobbit Road. Smell the lows, no property law. How do we face our fellow neighbors by doing this? We just received $4.5 million grant from New York State with a large chunk of that money being used to revitalize Veterans Park. This is not a fit. The village residents must be informed that everything we're doing here, including spending money on a feasibility study. That's my opinion. So with that, I'll put this up for a vote. All in favor of spending $7,500 to do a feasibility study with the town urging its sewer plant with the village? It's up.
We were in a motion, we just gave a roll call.
Make a second, who second the motion? Cynthia, I wanna poll everybody on this, too. I wanna poll everybody individually on this.
Just a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Pecoraro?
Yes.
Trustee Ambriani?
Yes.
Mayor Hambury? Absolutely not. And as far as letting anyone in down there? I'm the mayor. I direct people what to do.
So you're telling the public that you're gonna stop that, and that's moving forward?
I'm telling the, yes, I am. I'm telling that I am not, I am not allowing, I am not, can I ask you? I am not allowing Jake Henry to open up that sewer plant for people to go into there. There is no official company, I don't have an attorney here. This is wrong. The public needs to be present and instructed.
This has already been voted on, and you cannot overreach by disrespecting and disregarding the will of the board. This has been the will of the board.
You, you.
By majority vote of a fully constituted board, and that is it, it is written.
Well, that's where problems happen, because the board thinks they're more powerful than the public. The public, the public needs to direct us. This is a major thing that would change this village. It will lower the prices in the village of Montgomery and raise the prices of property.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna wrap that up here. Moving on to the next.
No, we're not gonna move on, I'm running the meeting here, I'm just saying what happened in here. It's the will of the people.
It doesn't sound like it's the will of the people, it sounds like it's the will of you.
Well, then, then, no, no, well, you know what?
So you are putting on record that you are going to tell the DPW superintendent not to allow Delaware Engineering into the water?
Not that I'm going on record that I'm not going, I already told them not to. When we need, the public needs to be aware of this. This is how things happen. Again, I bring up the housing up there at Shopway. If people only knew it was happening. This is a, the town sewers coming to the village, and folks need to do it. People like myself years ago, they go to work, they come home, they bring their children, they get stories, they put the kids to bed, they watch a little TV. They depend on the village board to do the right thing. This is too big for the village board to decide. Again, this is why the government is not trusted by the people.
This is why we're asking for a study. Understand the law.
Well, I need the public to tell me they want a study. And so far, I have not heard one person, and I talk to people all the time. I'm always out there. Alright, let's move on. I would talk to me.
I don't know that anybody.
Talk about it.
I'm really, I just wanna say, we're going on tangents, that I'm sad, that we are doing. I'm sad that we're having to do a clarification resolution to restate something that we've already voted on.
You know, what happened was, if you recall, you and Steve voted to pay for this. Now this has changed. You and Steve voted to pay for it, it's on video. You voted to pay for this. Alright, let's move on, okay?
That's not true.
Now we have, alright, well, that's not the video. I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm not gonna argue with you. Alright.
We need to make a motion that that is not.
Yes.
That has changed.
Make a motion, make a motion.
From April 22nd, you, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes from April 22nd we changed to state that the village is paying $7,500 for half of this study, and nobody else, it is not being paid for by anybody else but the village.
I did not say that they were paying for it, they said they were paying for it.
It was not part of the resolution.
It was right, basically.
As soon as he found out it was a sewer plant, and that was his.
And the attorney requested that they change the minutes.
We're not changing the minutes, what?
I make a motion.
We're not.
Change the minutes, and it's not gonna ever set.
We cannot change the minutes, no matter what you say.
Yes, you can.
They're accurate.
Now, we're.
They're accurate.
It's right on.
It's accurate.
Stop, stop, it's right on the video. You said you were paying for it, and then you said I agree. That's that, let's move on.
No.
I'm giving.
There's a motion.
You make a motion to accept them, alright, you make a motion. Make a motion?
I make a motion to change the August 22nd, April 22nd minutes to reflect.
To accurately reflect.
Accurately reflect.
Okay, alright, second.
Motion that the village is paying for this $7,500.
Okay, second. I'm, I'm.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me. Alright, move on. Authorize the PBA touch truck fall festival schedule, October 25th. Mayor and Tracy Casey, I don't know why it says mayor. Tracy Casey and I think Lori Dahl. Why does it say mayor?
Because you were bringing up the topic.
I wrote that?
No. You had asked.
I put the.
Oh, they did, alright, alright, no, listen.
Whoever asked you to put it on the agenda is who I am.
No, they did. But, okay, okay.
Just because he's of everything, yes.
Okay, no, no, no.
Do you want me to change that?
No, 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 but I just said.
The person who asked to put it on the agenda.
No, 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 no.
Is to introduce the topic.
I didn't know, I didn't show that on the end yet, thank you. Alright, authorize the PBA touch a truck fall festival schedule, October 25th, 2025. Chris, you wanna say anything about?
We're gonna do it in conjunction with Tracy's event. We did a touch truck last year, we brought a lot of different people, it was a lot of fun. We have different police departments, different agencies from all over the place, different businesses. We're gonna do it in conjunction with the village's fall fest this year, I think it'll be bigger and better things, or can be virtually, it's a great idea.
And so you won't be handling any of the food trucks and the additional vendors? You'll be doing the touch a truck and police portion of that?
Correct, yeah, so it makes it a lot easier for the PD as well, because I'll do all the trucks, all the agencies, and she can do all the food trucks and all the other stuff that we got.
I think it's cool.
I think it'll work out really well.
Thanks, guys. Alright, make a motion to accept that?
Second.
All in favor?
Where, what is this, the fall fest event? I'm not going to be on the spot, but you have an idea of what you'll be doing for that?
Yeah, so it's food trucks, vendors, crafts for the kids, corn mazes, hay mazes, hay rides. You know, family fun event, family fun weekend, because the next day is the Trump retreat. So it's like a whole, full weekend in the village of Montgomery.
And you got a whole bunch of people helping, I saw it the other day.
Yeah, I did get a nice events committee together.
I'm sorry, you're wrong.
And is this to benefit the Montgomery Day Fund also, or separate?
So what this will do is help with village events. I need you guys to know there is no fund for village events. So when we decide to do something like this, each event funds itself, so it would be nice to be able to say, oh, we want a DJ, so we have a couple hundred.
Have you already established a village events fund?
Um, yes, it's the hometown, yes.
For hometown spirit will cover.
Hometown spirit events, so it has its own.
Thanks, Tracy.
No problem.
And Debbie, I apologize, I realize the mayor thing, I mentioned it, too, I didn't, I didn't know what that meant. Sorry.
So hometown spirit events, so I don't have to ask again, is going to encompass all the events where in theory we're building up a key to be able.
Yeah, like, so that when we can donate money next year to General Montgomery Day, and like, what we wanna do, for example, like last year, I was putting charge of Old Fashioned Christmas. Old Fashioned Christmas theater before was done by the Montessori school, so like, there was nothing. So, and the village, like, for example, the car show is in a couple weeks. Village has given no money for the car show, I have to figure out how to pay DJ. I have, you know, all these things, and there's no money, so.
The, my question then is only about the General Montgomery Day. So is that its own separate fund, where the?
General Montgomery Day is separate from hometown spirit events. Hometown spirits is General Montgomery Day fund. Hometown spirit events is the events committee fund. I, that hometown spirits for General Montgomery Day, I think was created last year maybe, or the year before. I only got on the board for General Montgomery Day last year in July, so I don't know the details. I just know that like, people's donations and stuff goes into that account.
And this may be off topic, but as we're talking about General Montgomery Day, is there a concern that if 17K covert is not done in time, that?[1751.74]
That will be done in time.
Yeah, I was. Is there a concern?
I, I was told that it should be done by the General Montgomery Day.
Asking if there's.
There are heads scheduled.
No, you don't, I understand, if you have a favor, the guys will move it quick on it.
Nice. Do we have a report from the food truck festival yet, with an idea of what the net profit was for that yet or not?
Uh, no, we don't, I know that like, we, no, we are still figuring out, we're bringing in invoices, paying invoices out of the events thing, but Lori's on vacation. So we had other things going on, so we haven't really set down the date yet.
Okay, can we try to get something together for the nineteenth meeting so that we have an idea of how short we are, so we can try and be as helpful as possible in making sure that we're going out and doing what we can do as private citizens and family members and all that stuff to get where we need to be for Montgomery Day?
So, make a motion, second, one favor? Do you do that?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to authorize movie night and parent night out, I think it's really cool. On the Fox Senior Center for September nineteenth, December seventh. Tracy.
So my thought on this is, my first one will be September nineteenth in the Senior Center. Parents' night out, so from six to ten, you can drop your children off, at Village Residence of course, at the Senior Center. Me and my events committee will have games for them to do, cupcake, juices, a movie if they wanna sit in the corner and do, that's for September. For October, um, I really, each month I'll have a plan. December is Polar Express night, movie, Kids in Their Pyjamas, so on and so forth. One of the months, I've been in touch with somebody, which is for events fund, who'd come out of, um, character, like I put a poll out there on Facebook, who would your child like to meet? Character wise, a lot of people said, literally Spider-Man. So I've been in touch with somebody who has all these characters and he's willing to work with me because he's from the area as well, to have a breakfast, a character breakfast, you know? People will pay, it'll cover the food and cost of the, the, um, characters. It's not always a money-making event, it's just something nice to do for the children of the community, because there's nothing much for the children to do in this community.
So we're talking about, I'm sorry, we're talking about every Friday night, you mean at the Senior Center?
No, once a month. So something in September, something in October, something in November.
But I talked about September nineteenth, but didn't we just move the bandstand to that day and we're gonna have to have this up here, like the band just got moved to September nineteenth, so.
Yeah, but that really, I mean, how many people really bring their young children to the bandstand?
I'm asking a question, I'm talking, do we have to have police at both locations by the way you have a full bandstand?
Well, I don't think you would have to have police at the Senior Center.
It would depend on, you guys are gonna have Shepherds or something like that?
Yeah, we have.
Something we have to.
Yeah, like we have an event, like older people who just signed up for the events committee are volunteers, so they will be there volunteering to help babysit these children, you know? I can't imagine that they're gonna be older than ten or eleven, you know, board games.
My only question about maybe, to even that, for one reason and one reason only to decide officially is just to make sure we have, um, some sort of, the parents are dropping them off or release, just to make sure we have that at least.
Absolutely, I will have something, I will make, have something made up to give to you guys on the nineteenth. But I would talk, the reason that I had put these, when I found out you guys were having a meeting, put these on the agenda, because I wanna start advertising for them. We wanna start letting the people know touch a truck, we wanna start letting all people know September nineteenth.
I'll make that motion pending sufficient insurance and, and waivers.
So what kind of insurance would I have to have? I mean, because, because honestly, like then that's just, like I know for the food truck festival, the insurance costs, of course, it's an event, but this isn't like, I mean, like what kind of insurance would we need to have the people to work, you know?
I'll have to.
Can't you table this, I know you wanted to announce, but you'll be able to kind of a lot of ideas.
We just have to be able to work together, I'm working out with the details, I already make sure everyone's covered, we're covered. Clear clarification that needs to be made between the village and the committee for those insurance purposes, I think is the goal long term.
Okay.
So can you do the motion contingent?
Yeah.
Of those?
Yes.
So she could still have.
So we can start advertising this step.
That's what we're doing this next.
Well, we're talking about, we're gonna take the Senior Center away from the possibility of being rented on Friday night.
But just once a month.
Just, I realize that, just once a month, but you know, we've got one for a crisis family that opened in two weeks and things like that.
It's not just on Fridays.
It's, okay.
It could be a Saturday morning for the breakfast, you know? And I checked the dates.
Yeah.
Before I wrote out my paperwork, I checked the dates, so the seventh was definitely open for the summer and the nineteenth was definitely already open.
Well.
I mean, I do have the.
I think the children you have to turn in. We want to have people who are even.
Well, I'm saying like, I'm sure people, I mean, I have parents on my event committee for children in this community. There is a wide, I have a police officer on my events committee, so I'm a hundred percent confident that I, you know.
I'm comfortable that conclusion.
As far as worrying about somebody booking it, we're having fun with our, we're having fun, we're having fun with our kids.
I could use the rec center.
So if, if, if you've got, we're not gonna bump you out, so somebody can book it, okay, I understand the village is gonna make some money on that, but you know, kids are only kids.
I'm very lenient, the pain that's this past, this weekend coming up, I, I tabled that because somebody wanted to use the Senior Center.
Remember one thing, you're volunteering.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You don't punch a clock, you're doing it Saturday with the kindness of your heart and to all the other parents that was with the conversation, so I thank you for that.
And we, we have, we, we have questions, we just received.
Nobody's saying anything about the.
Ask the locals questions, you know?
Nobody's saying anything about that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I see your question.
I just received, thank you to the village, it's all good.
But that's what I said, that's what I'm asking. Would you maybe welcome one of the trustees to be on the event committee with you?
I'd be, and it was out there, if any of you wanted to volunteer, you certainly could have, but absolutely.
When are the meetings or?
So we had a meeting already and I didn't schedule the next one, but it's coming up because I need to delegate some car show stuff.
I was there to read it.
Yes.
Cynthia, can I answer your question, Fridays are rarely booked, just so you know from the public. It's usually Saturday, Sunday, I get booked more. And this is a year and that's just.
I, yeah, I put my share of events on Fridays.
And, but like I'm not opposed to, there's nobody in the rec center, you know, so like we have to move it to the rec center, move it to the rec center.
Did we already have a motion?
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contingent.
Let me do it, Steve, let me, let me do it, let me give some, hey, quality here. All right, I'd like to make a motion to have movie night, parent night out in the Fox Senior Center, with exceptions that, that you guys asked as far as insurance and stuff like that.
Training insurance.
Training insurance and all that stuff, but to give her the, to give Tracy the authorization to go out there and start advertising.
I'm seeing.
I'll see.
One favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Karen. Our next up, motion to discuss grants, Ryan, you wanna speak about that?
Yes, this has been discussed in many different ways since I've been on the board, so I did ask the clerk to put grants on the first, I don't think we speak on every, the first meeting of the month when we're doing reports and all that, going forward, so that we can decide at that meeting, anything new that's come out from the grants portal or anywhere else that we're collecting them, because there's local grants available as well. We can discuss it briefly at the meeting and decide whether we move forward or not, because right now there's like fifteen different grants from all different departments floating around. So I had asked for some guidance and some information and an answer, a letter of support, so that I could get some of these in, and now we've missed them, because a lot of them will be on Thursday first. So the two that are still available for us to apply for are the New York BRICS program and the Green Resiliency Grant, and then there's also an open space grant from the county. Um, that's available and everybody should have all of those documents in their email.
Do you leave them cost us anything?
Yes, but, but I really feel like, can you clarify and, and you can briefly discuss what everybody's feeling is on that, because we've discussed it and you said you're open to grants, but every time I present something, you say, no, grants aren't free and we don't want, we don't have any money, we can't do any matching. But I feel like the thought process should be, if we're getting a grant for one hundred or two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars, I would think most taxpayers would prefer to pay fifteen or twenty thousand dollars for that two and three hundred thousand dollars than to pay for the project in full, because that feels.
Is there application fee?
No, because you pay into the aid funds, we have a line and strategy, we offer to come and do a presentation to refresh everybody on what they're capable of doing and what they'd like to do and how they can be a resource to everyone at a meeting, so I mean, some same information.
So we had a chat with the mics, sorry, this is for you, um, and what they, they had said was, we asked them to not apply for anything that had a application fee. So they're only presenting us ones that have no matching or.
They've clearly identified with.
Clearly identified no matching or what the match is before we even talk about it.
Most of these grants are ten and twenty-five percent match, and that most of the time can be money or in-kind donations, so if we can say.
They'll still be in-kind donations, yeah.
Well, they might not be, so in-kind donations, if we can get someone to donate the time and labor to do the work and the cost of that would be, we can quantify that to what the match is for the grant. But some of these are not just funding, they're sidewalks, they're things we need, like water treatment studies, there's, um, the smart growth coming up is that we just missed out on, that included funding for comprehensive plants, we could have done our own comprehensive water and sewer combined study.
No full, no full service, I gotta let me get inspired, we didn't know that.
Yes, you did, I emailed you, I mean, Debbie Mayor, and I emailed you again on July sixth and then again on July twenty first, so that I had time to put the, put the application in, and no one responded.
We.
I think that's something we need to.
I understand.
We are gonna be hurting again next year, a lot less than this year, and I'm very careful on spending the money. Period, we have a four and a half million dollar grant from New York State that. I am very careful on spending this money.
And we can be lever, using that money to leverage for matching portions of other grants, so that we can exponentially increase that money long term, if we do it wisely, but we have to leverage the grants to do that, and some of that.
I understand, I understand, I understand investments, I understand money, I understand that, and I understand that we almost gotta rate taxes twenty-eight percent this year, we got a thousand eleven. And I know it's around the corner, and I know it's gonna be a whole different thing, and I want a lot less tax burden on the, on the taxpayer. I could only have, you don't have the money to lay out for this stuff.
I, I think matching grants are, are acceptable if the match is already something that was gonna be in the budget. You know, and I'm not looking for going out for a fresh project and then realizing it's twenty thousand dollars, it wasn't already there, but things that were already, we know in the next ten years should be done, sidewalk, sidewalks, parks, like the one from the county right now is an open space grant. Be used for any park available, and the money's there, they're literally asking people to apply for.
Are we guaranteed this?
No grants are ever here, there's no guarantee.
Are we, are we guaranteed?
We already have.
Are we guaranteed this money, that's what I'm asking.
You have to apply, and every time I ask you to apply, you don't answer.
And you gotta be in it to win it, with a lot of it, there's no guarantee you can win it, and I'm not gonna take taxpayer money, roll the dice with it.
We're not spending money unless you get the grants, there's no application.
You know what, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this, you can vote on it the way you want, I have a budget I have to go for next year, and I'm not gonna roll the dice on this, this is really scary this year that just passed, you guys can vote on it, you have that right.
So I'm gonna present, I'm gonna circular file all of the grants that have expired before the nineteenth. I will send to the clerk to distribute with our board documents, any current grants that we still have time to apply for. I will also ask Lenny to be here, or send a little.
May I just for a second, let me just clarify what happened this year. We cut nine thousand dollars out for summer camp, we cut ten thousand dollars out from the Senior Center. There was a, there was a vote against having the senior dining luncheon, there were things cut. And now we're gonna put money out there for something, it's like, it's like, it's like maxing out.
That's not true. You don't put money unless you get the grant.
It's like maxing out your charge card and then you get another one to pay off this charge card. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm pretty fugal with money, I'm in the position I am because you are fugal with money in life, and this is not what I'm gonna do with taxpayer money.
Do, can we discuss if the Green Resiliency Grant and the New York BRICS Grant, both the applications are due by August fifteenth, and can we decide if we're going to forward them both and then prepare for the press later after the nineteenth? Cynthia, do you have any of that, or do you need to?
Nope, I have it. I have.
Well, where do we have that, this is, where do we have to now?
The Green Resiliency Grant is the one we're discussing, correct?
Yep.
Well, can you give a quick rundown on what it does?
I, that I'm saying. All right, may I find one, you said there's no guarantee.
Cynthia, Stephen. Breaks on these two, the BRICS and the Green Resiliency. Yeah, I know, there's also the county, the open space one, which I think is in the emails.
That one.
Um, I, Debbie, do you need to cut copy of that one?
The open space one, I think, just is right down our alley and it's county, and so it's, it's a small pool from which they're gonna pick the winner from, and that's money that goes directly into parks. I don't see how there's any way we turn down a chance to get more money for our parks.
And then the last two, Town Villages and City Meetings, that Mike was believing that he doesn't go to, Steve Newhouse, county legislator, was begging municipalities to apply for.
I was with Steve Newhouse last week for about three hours talking about stuff like this, so I, I, I respect what you're doing, and Steve is part of the parks, and getting a lot of money from New York Forward to fix up our hall.
Right, so our point with leveraging is, when, if we have this on the back and they know that we're already getting money for it, and then we can, we can push in a bigger project, and they will see that we have the funding, and the, the county one can work as our match for the New York Forward, and you actually don't, you pay less. So you can use this grant to pay for, you can take ten thousand dollars.
I know how money works, but I do know that the grant person from the CBD, and I'm not sure I got the, the, the letters right, has told us, because we have gotten so many grants and we're in such good shape, the chances of us getting anything are slim to none.
Yeah, but you're talking about one specific grant.
I'm talking about taxpayer money.
No taxpayer money. There's no match on CBD either.
So, I mean, we're not talking about apples and apples.
Okay, well, you know, I.
Anyway, so, okay, the Green Resiliency Grant is, New York State Environmental Facilities will offer grants for certain products that improve water quality and mitigate the effects of extreme weather through the Green Resiliency Grant Program. This grant funding is made available in part through Clean Water, Clean Air, and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, GRG grants are awarded on a competitive basis to transformative projects that enhance the resilience of stormwater infrastructure across New York State. Eligible projects must utilize green infrastructure, stormwater management practices, and/or nature-based solutions to manage combined and/or sanitary sewer overflows and mitigate risks associated with extreme weather events, which we all know are coming more and more frequently unfortunately. Projects not, must not begin construction before notification of award and must commence no later than July one, two thousand twenty-seven. It will fund up to ninety percent of eligible project costs with grants ranging from a minimum of one million to a maximum of ten million dollars per project. They must be capable of capturing treating and increasing the time of concentration for a minimum of twenty-five hundred cubic feet of stormwater per ninetieth percentile rain, percentile rain at fall event within a clearly defined drainage area. So this is for stormwater runoff, that kind of stuff, um, so ten percent.
Yeah, so we're talking nine hundred thousand dollars out of a minute, that's, that's a lot of coverage. And if we know we're gonna have these issues, I, I don't think we should pass upon opportunity, we should try.
And like with New York Forward.
Then you get the votes, vote for it, and then hold it up.
Okay, and then, so if we'd like to consider that outfall and see what Lenny thinks our chances are for the projects that we burn outlines that we would like to do, and I'll look Jake in because it's water.
I think the approach that we took with New York Forward was, we didn't get it first time, was it second year, like?
Three times, three times.
Three times, so, but we did get it, this one doesn't have an application fee, so if we get the one in this, this year, maybe we get it next year, and, and then.
Same with WQIP.
And I look at sidewalks, and I look at fire hydrants, no, sorry, look at, look at them, right, in front of you, other parts around the corner.
So the community developed a block grant that would have gone to fund sidewalks to connect factory street and brush away with the village, and both are the communities that are high density housing with more people in wheelchairs and strollers and children, and that would have been a transformative project, that would have become a legacy.
I, I, I respect sidewalks, but I know that the sidewalks that go all the way down, guess the both of, so a little bit more needed. And you agree on what happened before you run the board, they're more needed than other areas, they are very much needed. So let's go, you can vote on it.
Okay, we're over the other, there's, there's, right, there's two more, New York BRICS, that we still have time for, um. The following is a breakdown of information related to program funding, one hundred million dollars total funding is available. Funding in order of priority, new community centers, which is acquisition, new construction, or expansion for additional. which is acquisition, new construction, or expansion for additional square footage projects ranging from six million to eighteen million dollars. New community centers, acquisition, new construction, or expansion for square footage, and renovation of existing community center projects ranging from three hundred and twelve thousand dollars to six, over sixteen million dollars. It's a twenty percent match. There's a fifteen million dollar maximum award, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar minimum award. So this is something we could use for the rec center to improve that, or library, or.
They already have that written up, they have the windows, they have everything broken down in New York Forward, getting a rec center is going to be.
Right, so that's a tiny plan.
Right, it's going to be used for a lot of things.
It could use any community center.
I am not arguing with you, I actually respect you guys going out and looking for it, and it's just kind of money.
Okay, and you have the open space, if you don't want to get pulled up.
It's actually.
Yeah. Yep, excellent, I see the county's room. Why are you making me laugh all the time? Orange County is a developed program to fund open space protection within its jurisdiction. The funding program is designed to fulfill the requirements that are adopted in several documents, including Orange County Open Space Plan. The Orange County Open Space Fund will provide matching support for fee simple development rights or conservation easement purchase price as well as closing or stewardship costs of up to fifty percent of the purchase price not to exceed fifty percent of the appraisal value. Eligible applicants may be municipal, qualified non-for-profits, land trusts, and individual property owners. Municipal applicants are towns, villages, and cities. Funding work contracts will be based on specifics of each proposal and of the primary funding source. It will be, it's two cycles, free applications are due May twenty-third, which we missed, and law applications are due on September nineteenth. So there's a whole list and a breakdown that we can post online for eligible areas, but it's water source protection, wellhead protection, water supply, and creating more barriers for incoming development, right?
So this is a great one. I don't know, anybody that was here at the last meeting, we were talking about possible berms to put along the corridors to block when the buildings and warehouses and things are coming up. Have you ever looked at the seventeen K corridor across from Stewart Air Force Base? They have the berm with the trees and it blocks view of the giant car park that you don't see in that time. So we're looking at the entryways into the village by protecting these, this kind of thing can be used to create those berms and trees and the brick walls or stone walls, and it can help protect visibility of things that are coming up. And this, this one is not really worth, we need to go out of, because it's county, so they're well aware of the issues that we have coming along the airport.
And again, we have New York Forward ones that are earmarked for certain things. We can leverage that money to get a fifty percent match from the county at a higher level, and you do not have to pull that from our budget.
This, this is the one I'm really done home about, because I really think that's.
You touched on it, that was really good. Never pay attention, it's just how people walk, not paying attention.
Water, agriculture, recreation, and public access, and landforms of landmarks are what are approved. So of those three, the GRG, the BRICS, and the open space, do we want to investigate putting in applications before the deadlines? Because that gives two weeks for, so Debbie, if any information has to be pulled for water, GPW and Millennium, not that any.
We'll find you an application.
Millennium, not you.
So we shouldn't have most of our information already, correct?
I would hope so, I mean, there are, there are a grant right there.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be too much as far as that.
All right, so let's make a motion on these, to, to go through with these. We can divide them both, if you want to do it individually, but make a motion to go through these, these grants.
It's for you, I'm ready.
Mm-hmm.
GRG, BRICS, and open space.
All right, make a motion to go for that.
Okay, I'll second it. Are you making a motion, or?
I'll make a motion for you guys to do it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Me, and for the reasons I said for the moment. Next one, for New York BRICS, make a motion to go through it. All in favor?
I thought we were doing for all three of you.
We just did it for all three, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Throwing's out here now.
So to be, to be clarified, it's open space, BRICS, and.
I'm sorry.
The other, the other condition is the email that we received about the credit card. I think we should talk about that as soon as possible. We couldn't talk about it in email, did you see that?
Yes, I did.
I agree.
Yeah, she has this one to me about this, is about credit card, we got something in Montreal. The credit card is from Montreal, and she said we've got to be.
Doors, which are being from banking, or.
And they're honoring, and they have, they have a great support system, they come and help, they have a ton of other programs that we can.
And you will have to pay the fees.
This is very complicated dealing with.
Yeah, why?
Nice.
And I, I mean, I love the service that they provide, yeah.
This is why you have managed to do this to bring the funds, Heather's good, Heather's good hire, Heather's great.
So I'd like to make a motion to allow Heather to close out the one credit card and, and anyone with Orange County land trust, probably all the protocols that the treasurer's part now.
All right.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry it. Okay, well, let's see, because this is a board, came from a board member, everybody wants to talk, but, um, public comment. I don't want to talk or anything like that, so please.
I'm just going to give you some information on the grants that you guys are trying to talk about. Just so you know, I sit with the town monthly with Millennium and talk about grants, I think some of you do know that. The HUD grant that was just recently applied for by the village, as well as the town, they were here on the twenty-third. They do a tour, a site visit here for the builder Montgomery. That grant, you're able to use some of that money for the matching costs of other grants. You have to investigate grants to find out what the language in the grants are, because some grants pay to match. All right, so you should look into that.
Yeah, but some grants have the tax, you have to do this, you have to do that, you may have to have certain kind of housing, you may have to have certain kinds of roads, so yeah.
You have to read the grant and, and find out what it's about. The HUD grant is the Orange County grant, and I think, I know on our side over in the town, we, I asked that question directly, and I should kind of do that. The other thing I want to make, there's the New York State Greenway grant, you guys ought to look into that. There's, Randy had mentioned about the master plan, paying for a master plan. They will give you twenty thousand dollars, let's say if you wanted to do a parks master plan, they'll, they'll pay for that if you get that grant.
Just part of the Greenway project?
Yes.
Okay.
Seventy thousand dollars they have in that grant, for instance, the gardens down there is in desperate need of that trail. It's kind of deteriorating. That grant, seventy thousand dollars will help you redo those trails, blacktop or whatever you choose to do. The, in general, the only thing I would like to say is that, you know, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and you guys are always at it. You guys got to stop being at it all the time. You've got to stop being so negative, Mike. Everything, it seems like you're battling these three all the time. I think they bring a valuable thing to the table, the research they do, and, and, but, you know, after, the way I see it, when you beat them up all the time, they're, they're going to get disinterested and not want to do the work. Because you beat them up all the time, and I think it just needs, the whole atmosphere of these meetings need to change drastically. And Mike, I really, really, you know, I've been quiet for quite a while now, and this is the first time I've been taking stuff like this up. All of you guys need to come to face and figure out what, what the hell are you doing here, and the fighting's got to stop. It's stopped here, but it hasn't stopped there, and I'm begging yous to come to terms with each other and just stop it. Work together. Thanks.
Anybody else? You know, I didn't necessarily say or anywhere I just.
That's okay. Joe Smith, Main Street.
Pretty much. It's okay, Bob, it's okay.
The resolution you guys passed regards to the sewer treatment plant, just so you know, it has material inaccuracies that matters to fact that are instated in that resolution. It also has, and I don't know where the village boards think, the village board thinks they have the authority to do this, but no less than three of the resolutions are approving somebody else's contract. And you guys vote, where, ask something or other to approve the contract and the addenda. That addenda is signed by the town supervisor and the, and engineering company. You guys somehow think you could approve somebody else's contract, that's new to, I think, the world. Because what if you don't approve their contract? That doesn't happen? So I don't know where you guys think you could do that, but you really can't. There is no agreement, unless there is something since the last meeting. If I ask you to show the people if I foil a request right now, the agreement that the town and the village made with each other to engage in a joint sewer treatment feasibility study, I'd like to see it. If there's an agreement between the town and the village as clients of the engineering company, I'd like to see it. I've asked for it, nobody seems to think they have it, no one seems to volunteer it, they do have it. So if there's a contract between the village and the town agreeing to do a joint study, that joint study, that joint means two people together, doesn't mean the town engages in an agreement and says you guys have to agree to what we agreed to. And you can't agree to what they agreed to, you have to agree to your own thing. You can't agree to what somebody else agreed with. You don't have a detailed, I think that was in the resolution, a detailed statement of work or whatever it is, that these people are going to perform. If there's a list of the tests they're going to perform, I'd love to see it. If you're approving an agreement that doesn't include a list of what tests they're going to perform, it's malfeasance to approve it. You don't know what they're going to do unless you do in advance. So you're approving activities being done at the only piece of critical infrastructure that this village controls of its own, that I know of. I'm going to have a power plant, and you're allowing people without telling you what their study's going to consist of with specificity to do it. So if they decide, this is obviously outmanaged, but if they decide they're going to test the viability of the concrete by putting four sticks of dynamite to it, guess what, you agreed to it. They definitely decide to do it. It's outmanaged, I know, but this is what you agreed to, because you don't know what they're going to do. If you, since the last meeting, if you have gotten an itemized list of what that feasibility study includes, I'd like to see it. I have the agreement that you agreed to, as far as I know, which is the agreement between the town and the engineering company. It doesn't include not one name of one test, not one name of one test. So what tests are they doing? You agreed to allow them to do what exactly? Does anyone want to volunteer the information of what tests you agreed to allow them to perform on our only piece of critical infrastructure? Nobody. I bet you didn't even see it, none of you. Okay, I have it, I volunteered to show it to you, if you didn't get it yourself. There is not one itemized test written on that feasibility study, and I'm surprised members of the public aren't outraged about this. If they want to put three pounds of C-four to the concrete, we can't stop them, because there is no list of what they're going to do. And how you could allow people to come in on their own desire to test our, our only piece of critical infrastructure that we possess control over, to do a blanket whatever they want, is ridiculous and it's malfeasive. And I'll tell you what, I'm likely going to show it to court on Monday in Orange County to get an injunction against this thing going forward, because you guys have approved something that's materially factually inaccurate. And it's also outside the scope of your authority. You can't approve somebody else's contract. The village's name is not on any of these. None, zero. And that's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I would be rested this summer. Oh, make motion with jurors.
Can you step over for a second?
Second. All in favor?